Good afternoon. It's seven o'clock on February, what is today, the sixth? And we will call the City Council meeting to order. If you'll join me in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda tonight is announcements. Is there any additions to the agenda from anybody? I hear an echo, echo, echo.
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out.
Anybody have any additions to the agenda? Nope. Declaration of ex-party contracts, contacts, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera. No? Awesome. So number four on the appointments on the agenda is appointments of the council vacancy. And I'll let Alyssa talk about it as soon as she picks the echo.
It's not just a volume thing? I'm talking. Can you turn the volume down?
It is on.
But hold on.
Got it? Test. Great, thank you. So before Alyssa goes to the appointment and discusses this, I want to thank all the folks that have stepped forward to fill this vacancy. There's five of you out there. I really appreciate you coming forward to feel the need that we have. I wish there was more than one position to appoint, but I truly believe that all the folks that have applied is going to have a good impact whichever way that direction ends up going. So Alyssa, I'll let you go with that.
Okay, hold on, let me get to that page now. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So upon the request of Mayor Quigley, last week we invited the candidates who were seeking to fill the vacant council position, invited them to come to tonight's meeting and talk about their qualifications and why they are seeking an appointment. We did advertise this position beginning in early January and accepted letters through January 31, 2023, and the letters had been sent to Mayor Quigley for review. The letters we received were from Peter Bellis, Ken Carey, Camilla Cornwell, Mark Cronquist, and Stephen Sims. As I mentioned, they were all invited to attend tonight and were notified they'd be given three minutes to speak, and we can move forward with that whenever you guys are ready.
Thank you. I think what we'll, the easiest thing to do is just have it by alphabetical order, the way you just read it off, not alphabetical order, sorry, the order you just read. Does any, the council have an objection to that? No? With that, we'll start with Peter. Just need to push the button there. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Quigley and council members. My name is Pete Bellis. My wife and I moved here to Stateon about three years ago, and we love it here. We think this is the most wonderful small town we've ever been part of, and I would really like to look at a way to give back to this town. My background, I was formally trained in engineering and computer science. I worked aerospace, military, I worked in banking and internet for a lot of years. And then the last 20 years of my career, I worked for a community college running their economic and workforce development division. So during that time, I got a chance to work with city councils, county organizations. I worked with economic development groups, chambers of commerce, industry associations. And I got an opportunity over that 15, 20 years to really gain a different perspective of all the things that go on in the whole, you know, government and city paradigm. We ran and, excuse me, just a second. We ran lots of grants. We ran workforce development grants. We did job opportunity grants. We did business development grants, business attraction grants, and really looked at everything we could do in the community to make it thrive and make the people of the community more successful. We had to, it always, we called them stakeholders. Here, we would call them constituents. You had to go, you had to find out what people wanted, what their needs were, what their capabilities were, what the resources were available, and try and match all those up to make something come together. I'm going to keep it brief. I think I have a really varied background. I think it's different than an already solid council that you have here, and I think I could be a benefit in giving some other perspectives in things that I've had to deal with. If you think that I'd be a good fit for that, I would be more than happy to serve on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. Ken, you're up next. If you guys have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, should we be asking questions of the?
Sure, if I have a brief question, that's fine. Do you have a question?
No, I was just wondering.
I wish I had gone first. That's a pretty tough one to follow.
There you go.
My name is Ken Carey. I am a business owner here in town. I've resided here in Stateon for about six years. Come April, I own the Spud Bus Baked and Loaded Potatoes. I also have the Third Avenue Eatery, which is downtown. I am currently a part of the chamber board, also newly appointed member of the homeless task force here in town, and I also coach baseball at Stateon High School. I feel that I have a very good pulse of what's going on in our core area of downtown. I feel I have a very good relationship with a lot of the business owners, as well as some of the city leaders we have here. As far as a background in politics or any kind of a council, I do not have that, but I think I could bring a fresh energy and some insight and opinion to an already pretty solid council. And so that's my bio in a nutshell, and I just like the opportunity to be able to serve and give back to a community that has supported us the last six years.
Anyone have any questions for Ken? Let's be consistent here. Thanks, Ken. All right. I'm going to probably mess this pronunciation up. Camilla? Close?
It's Camilla.
Camilla, there you go. Thank you.
I call her Kami. Good evening, Mayor Quigley, respected council members. First, I would like to express my gratitude for all the time that each of you spend to make our town a better place to live, regardless of whether or not I'm chosen tonight. I want each of you to know that what you do is appreciated, and we recognize that your job is not easy. All you have to do is spend five minutes on state and community connections, and you know that. Thank you for allowing me this time to share a little bit about myself and tell you why I would consider it an honor to serve this community as a council member. While growing up, my family moved around a lot, but Stateon was always where we came back to. Thankfully, we lived in Mill City just long enough for me to meet my husband in high school. It's a handsome guy back there in the blue plaid. And then we came back to Stateon. My first job, besides berry picking, of course, was the cone chop on the corner of Washington and Third Avenue. Somehow, I managed to avoid the cannery, but my husband and children have that under their belt. When my husband completed his commitment to the U.S. Air Force, there was never any question in our minds that Stateon is where we would call home and raise our children. And that's exactly what we've done. We lived in this beautiful little town consecutively now since 1994, and although for the last 18 years, my husband has driven back and forth to Hillsborough for work, we simply can't imagine living anywhere else. And that's one of the reasons that I would love to serve our community in this way. I care about its future, and I care about the kind of town we live in. More importantly, I care about the kind of town we pass to the next generations. I've done a lot of volunteer work in my life, and I don't want to be redundant because I know you guys have that in your packets. I do feel I have something to bring to the table. I have many years of fundraising and fund managing experience, years of planning events and projects and overseeing those, years of working on a team to solve problems, years of talking with people, and more importantly, listening to people as they share their concerns, ideas, and experiences. I've never served on a city council before, so I understand I would have much to learn, but I'm eager to do that. I don't believe political gain or self-interest have any place in our council seats, only a love for the people they serve and the town they're a part of. I would come to this council, sorry, I'm way more nervous than I should be. I would come to this council as a fresh set of eyes and ears, ready to listen to our community members and work hard to represent them in the decisions that are made. It's my desire to keep Stateon, its small-town feel, while making sure that we have the resources that our residents need to live happy, healthy lives. Again, I appreciate the time that you've given me tonight and the opportunity to share, and I trust that whomever you choose to fill the empty seat will love this town as much as I do and have a real desire to see it thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, you're up.
Thank you. Somehow, the temporary domiciled or homeless issue got crossed into the city council issue, so there's a blanket there. I work with Skylar at Mailer Wheeler's office, Adam at Mingus's office, and Shaw at Renee Goncalves's office, trying to deal with temporary domiciled or homeless. Hence the blanket and the apology for homelessness being mixed in with council. I also took a moment to print out, when I saw that it happened, a more relevant statement. And by the way, those blankets cost the city nothing. They're available at OSU surplus. It's a massive thing, and I've given Ken Todd's number so that hopefully we can draw on those resources as well. But that's the site. Hi, I'm Mark Cronquist. I moved here in October 2013. I live in the castle, the Lyle House. I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian. Linfield is my BA, and marketing is what I do. Why would I want to be a Stateon city councillor? And again, you know, when my kids were around, and my son's now a programmer for Apple London in Seattle, and my daughter's a med student at OHSU, we used to ask each other at dinner, what little thing have we done to make the world a better place today? Realizing we're not going to save the world, but finding 14,000 blankets for the other domiciled in Portland or something, that's something. I've served as a councillor here in the past, and as everyone can call, there were some council meetings when blankets would have been useful because they went on sometime. Been a planning commissioner, vice chair of the Parks Board, Parks Board Budget Committee, served as school board liaison, helped RDS before it was RDS and as RDS, and goodness knows how many other things. Ironically, the only thing I've not served on is the library board, which is weird because I love books and have lots of them, and I think I'm the number-one book purchaser at the library sales. Anyway, being a member of any things isn't a popularity contest. You don't do this because you want to get liked or loved. You do this because you want to ask the tough questions, you want to be responsible and respectful, but you want to get it done. So I always try to put the needs of the community first versus what the right thing to do is, and then versus like, how many kudos would I get for doing it? In fall of 2013, when I moved in, it wasn't all that long ago, but on Third Avenue, the only viable businesses were the Star Theater, City Hall, Monty's Hank's Guns, which was conveniently located across from Glenn's Funeral Home, which was right next to a health food store. My friend Lori noted it was not a really healthy downtown. And I don't see Dan here tonight, but as I recall, on 2014, we only issued one residential building permit. Being a shy, introverted individual, I walked into the gun store, which turned out to be owned by Hank, the once-and-future mayor, and Hank expressed amazement that anybody would want to move from Lake Oswego to Stateon. So he handed me, he welcomed me, handed me a couple sheets of papers, said, "Sign here", and I was at the Parks Board. And we discussed a 50-item wish list, including a dog park, team center, on and on and on. From food carts to opportunity zones to live workspaces, we did it all. And we worked hard with a lot of more talented people than me or anybody around me just to get out of the way and make it happen. Stateon faces, you know, a lot of good things in the future. You know, is that my timer? Timer? Yeah, well, I'll just skip over it. There are a lot of challenges, a lot of things we need to do, from the micro issues like the parking signs and the speed limits by the hospitals, the huge developments that are going to be coming our way, and it'd be great to be a part of them and to help keep Stateon livable, help do what we can to make it a better place, and that would be an honor to serve. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Mark. That leaves us with Mr. Sims. Stephen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Steve Sims, 2110 East Sandy Am Street, Stateon, Oregon. The reason I want to serve on the council, I would like to serve this community. I plan on living here. I retired here, plan on staying here, and I just want to give back. My time, my working years, I really didn't have the time to do a lot of volunteer work, but now I do. So, and I have a vested interest in Stateon. I mean, I was born here, grew up here, spent all my summers here at my grandparents' house as I was growing up, and love the town. I actually moved here from Italy, quite a change, but everybody asks me, "Why did you move back to Stateon?" It's because I love Stateon. I always have. I grew up here. So as far as volunteerism, I'm on the Parks and Rec Board, been on it for a little over a year. I volunteer at the Sandy Am Teen Center, my second school year volunteering there. I do, I do love the teen center. I think they do a really good job there. As far as my work experience, I am a 30-year Navy veteran. I was a commander in the Navy. I have a lot of experience, a lot of diversified background of job experience. When you're an officer, they try to make you well-rounded. You've got to be an engineer, an ops officer, a weapons officer, you know, and then you go and have command and things like that. But I mean, as soon as I was out of college, I was a division officer with 35 guys in front of me, and then later on, I was another division officer with over 100, and then on to be a department head, and then second command and head command of a ROTSA unit. I taught college as a Navy officer. They have colleges that send officers to teach leadership and management, leadership and ethics, and I taught at Oregon State, actually, came back to my school, and then South Carolina also. As far as my educational background, I got a Bachelor's of Science degree in chemical engineering. That's why I started out as an engineer. And I was Oregon State, so I'm local. And then when I did my master's, I did public administration, had to do a master's in the Navy to get promoted above lieutenant commander, so that's why we did that back in the day. And as far as my priorities, I, you know, I want to serve and work with the, with the city council. I'm a team player. I always have a team player's strategy when I'm doing things. I've been attending the city council meetings for the last several months, so I, hopefully, if, you know, if I get, get the honor of being chosen, I can hit the deck plates running and, you know, know what's going on as far as the meetings. And as far as time constraints, I have, I am retired now. I have plenty of time to put in for the job and put into city council, and hopefully, you know, I will, I would be honored to have a seat on the city council. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks. I just want to say to all you folks, thank you again. What an amazing slate of candidates, right? I mean, you all heard that, all heard their qualifications, their desire, why they want to serve, and it's, that's what really attracted me to Stateon, and that's what makes community in my mind. So again, thank you very much. If I had more than one slot, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, so I appreciate that. Anybody else in the council have any comments before I move on?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for your time. Thank you for the energy that you put into drafting these letters and coming down here to speak to all of us. I think it says a lot about this community, about how many people step forward whenever any need like this comes up. I mean, you look at, like, say, Facebook, and anytime anyone needs anything, this community is on top of it. And I just want to compliment all of you for being here and being a part of that. And then, not an easy decision. I wish we had more council vacancies to go ahead and appoint some folks here, but a good thing that's your call, Mr. Mayor.
I think. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, y'all, and we will, I will make a determination in the coming weeks, and I will let the individuals selected know. Thanks. All right, let's move on to resolution number 1053. And before we do it, I need to make a correction. You okay?
Do you want me to mention the correction, or do you want to?
Either way.
Oh, so in, sorry. In the resolution, it's mentioned that this is a two-year appointment. The library board is actually a four-year appointment, so we would respectfully request that you amend the resolution to be a four-year appointment.
Does someone want to offer a motion for that?
I think I know how to do this. I'm not quite sure I know how to do it. So I make a motion to amend resolution 1053, appointing, I don't know if I can pronounce her last name, Eileen, to a four-year term instead of a two-year term to the library board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to change the term from two years to four years on the library board. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries four to zero. So that's just changing the motion. Now we need an actual motion to appoint Eileen to the library board.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gilio.
I move to appoint Eileen to the library board and adopt resolution 1053.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to appoint, and I want to make sure, is Eileen here? No? Okay, I was trying to pronounce her last name. I'm probably going to botch it again. One thing you'll know about me is I hate botching people's names, so I apologize in advance. I think it's Eileen Kamelos. I'm going to use that right now. So it's been motion, there's been a motion in the second to appoint Eileen Kamelos to a four-year term in the library board under resolution number 1053. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ort.
I just want to thank Eileen for, for applying for this position and volunteering for the community.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, real quick. I just wanted to say also to Eileen, no specific training is required, and I just want to point out to everybody who's interested in any kind of boards or committees, you don't need any kind of training, just filling the qualifications. And a lot of us came to a lot of these different roles without any kind of training, and it's just important to have your perspective at the table. And so thank you for stepping up to Eileen on that.
Very well said. Okay, on to the motion. All those in favor of appointing Eileen to the library board for a four-year term, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries four to zero. Okay, this gives us an opportunity for public comment, and I'm going to start with the two that I got here for requests for recognition, and neither one of you is speaking on the council agenda, so Bob and Kay Pendleton, we'll start with you. All right, you have to just press the button there, sir.
Okay, Bob Pendleton here. I'm here with my wife, Kay. I just want to encourage the council and you, Mr. Mayor, to get in touch with your legislature, legislators, and urge them to support the two bills. I think you have the information in your packet. We're very concerned about the effect that these cafos will have on, the confined animal feeding operations will have on Stateon's quality of life, and we hope you'll take some action and possibly even take an official position with the legislators. Do you have any questions? I'm not sure I can answer them. I don't know too much about the entire process, but it concerns me a lot that it's going to affect Stateon's livability and the livability of everyone within miles of these, these huge operations.
Bob, can you just state your address for us for the record, please?
418 East Jefferson.
Thank you.
Stateon.
Thank you very much. Next up is Eddie Dooley. Probably pronounced that wrong too, didn't I? Is it Edie, right?
Yes.
There you go. Sorry. My correction.
No problem. It's Edie Knight now.
Okay.
So Edie Knight, 915 North Fourth Avenue. I'm a Stateon resident for over three years, raising my young family. I'm a member of Farmers Against Foster Farms. I'm also here to comment on the chicken cafos. Additionally, I am an agent of the Avery family, which owns 12,000 acres in the Thomas Creek watershed right by Jordan. I manage the forest for them. And I'm also on the board of the South Sandy Am Watershed Council, which has grave concerns about the impacts to water quality and watershed health of the three proposed chicken cafos around our community. I would like to strongly urge the council and the mayor to oppose these chicken cafos in a letter similar to the one that Onsvill wrote to Governor Brown, and also to support the bills that were referenced in your packets. These chicken warehouses would dramatically degrade our quality of life, breathability of our air, and the fabric of our community as a locally based, self-actualizing, hard-working place rather than a water-rich, vulnerable, passive target for colonization by industrial agriculture, private equity firms, no less. So outside money that's not really going to help our community. Beyond wanting to protect my quality of life that I've come to love so much in this town, I'm opposed, as a forester, I manage 12,500 acres, and a huge part of what we do in growing longer rotation, we grow 80 years versus the normal 40, is we're producing a ton of water that's clean and cold, and all of that effort would essentially be wasted with one downstream parcel. The Jordan site is right above the Jordan Swimming Hole, and so one poorly-sighted parcel could just obliterate everything we're doing to create that really important water. So yeah, thank you for listening today, and I urge you to come out against the cafos.
Thank you.
Thanks, CD.
Is there any other public comment? Is there an opportunity? Come on up. That's okay. You can just come up and state your name and...
Daniel Stuckert, live on 9184 Bishop Road, about a half mile from the, excuse me, from the Onsvill site. So I'd like you to visualize something. Imagine 6 million birds sitting where this kitchen, where this table is, and the groundwater where the floor is. That's where the water table is out there. The mainstream irrigation canal goes right through the middle of that property. That affects everybody. And I think we can sit back and we can visualize countless times that something that tastes sweet in the mouth of few becomes bitter in the belly of a community, and that's what this is going to do. We, friends of mine in the area have tried to sell their properties. The second the word of a chicken farm comes up, they bail. Property values are going to come down. Many of us have worked our whole lives to have what we have out there, and even though we, we live in a country for the rights of many, we have rights too. And to see what I've built destroyed is not right. And to see what I've built destroyed is not right. What happens when the groundwater goes bad? What happens when this carries through? Are we going to put this on the backs of our children? Because that's what we're doing. A couple people will prosper. The road traffic, the truck traffic, almost 4,000 trucks through that area, the county can't even take care of those roads as it is. The, who's going to repair the detriment, the, the degrade of the roads? The road taxes aren't going to come from Almsville. We're not going to get it. Outside, this county's going to get it. And, I mean, it's in the letter, everything that, all the detriment to it, so I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Counselor Ort.
Is it Daniel?
What's that?
Do you, I know these letters were dated for today, but do you know if a, um, hearing has been set yet?
I do not know. I just found out about this tonight, so I made it a point to be down here. I feel it's important.
Thank you.
Somebody knows the answer for coming up.
Hi. Hello. My name's Kendrick Kimbraskis. Um, I actually live in Syo. I don't live in the community of Staton, but Mayor Quigley and, uh, councilwoman, or I wanted to let you know, there is an informational hearing that has been set on February 20th. And the ask is that if you could submit a letter in support of House Bill 22667, which is the moratorium bill, um, which would just, like, have us pause on the, on the, um, construction of these operations until we can figure out a solution to adequately protect the water and air and roads and communities. That's what the ask is currently. This is an informational hearing only, so there's not an opportunity for public comment, but it's sort of the first phase in a series, which the process would be informational in public hearing, and then the legislature will, will, the committee will work the bill.
Thank you. Anybody else? That's good. Good. Okay. That takes us to consent agenda and the minutes from January 17th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Counselor Patty.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Also, hold on a second. You guys look at resolution, uh, 1052 on there as well? We're all good with that? Okay. So it's been moved in seconded to present the consent agenda as submitted. Any discussion? No? All those in favor of, uh, the motion? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries four to zero. All right. Julia, leads us with, uh, presentations, number seven.
So, um, our, as you guys know, as the pub, the audience, we've got a larger-than-usual audience, we have started doing a community partner, um, portion of the meeting where we invite community partners to come and share a little bit about who they are and, and what they do. Um, so this week's community partner is Sannion Water Control District, and Brent Stevenson is going to come up and share a little bit. I think, you know, you might know a little bit about what they do, but he'll hopefully share more about what they do.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Quigley, councilors. I do have a short presentation and primarily to help keep me on track a little bit, but also some information and some maps.
And is your microphone on?
I'll pull it a little closer here, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. So again, thank you, councilors. I manage Sannion Water Control District, been there for about 13 years, so some faces old, um, definitely some new councilors, so wanted to take the opportunity, when I talked with Julia, give you a little bit of information about special districts in general and what they are, and then some information about the district and kind of our facilities and partnership with the city. So special district, um, in Oregon is a quasi-municipal entity. We are a local government, but formed for a particular and special purpose. So different from a city where it's all municipal interests, it is for specific purposes. There's many different examples of special districts, fire districts, irrigation districts, water control districts. We can assess levy, tax, similar things to a city. We, um, we have, uh, boundaries where we provide services, and we comply with state laws. The state laws are typically specific to each special district and their formation, and they govern exactly and limit the powers of the district. So we are a water control district formed under ORS 553. So the top box are the purposes that we can be formed for, and generally, that's water control. In our area, the primary impetus when, when we were formed was for irrigation purposes, but, um, as a water control district, that's, that's changed over time, and we have included other services and operations. And so, while you can form as a district under those primary considerations, once formed, you can kind of, um, complete ancillary, um, activities, um, under your authorizations, and those include then domestic, um, municipal water, industrial water, recreation, wildlife, fish and wildlife, water quality. So it allows us quite a broad spectrum as it relates to water. Some of the key advantages of, of why, um, we, we formed as a special district, and I think why they exist, is that special purpose. You can focus, you can specialize. We, we are a government, um, but, and a public entity, but we're specialized, um, in our, in our purposes. One of the major benefits is we can kind of transcend boundaries where a city or another municipal jurisdiction, um, is governed, we can, um, our district is an example for cities, couple counties, much larger areas, and can, can fill in. We can enter into intergovernmental agreements, um, with entities, and really, we're just a, kind of a grassroots form of, of government, smaller than a small city because it's, it's users that are governed, elected, and govern the district. It, it's that grassroots form. So some of the functions that we do and specialize in, as I said, farms and farming, irrigation water started, but, um, domestic drinking water, Corps of Engineers revetments, hydropower, industrial use, fire ponds, fish and wildlife, parks, golf courses, stormwater conveyance, and other water quality facilities. So our district-specific, um, we, we formed early on, and we were, um, we were comprised of for-profit entities that weren't profiting, and, um, they were irrigating grant, grounds. You can see the West State, oh, that went forward there. But they were irrigating grounds and not being successful in their endeavors, and so they decided to, um, form, form a municipality. After that occurred in the 50s and the 60s, um, really, there was kind of buy-in. It was started with a couple small districts or entities, and the district continued to absorb and incorporate other, other entities, and ultimately, I think it was about five or six of those smaller ones. 1966, we purchased the facilities from, um, Mr. Reed, the Bennett Dams. That was the headline, and you can't see it on this, but, um, he was going to blow up the, um, he was going to blow up the dams because he had to foot, put Fish Passage in, and he didn't agree with that. So the district ultimately purchased all of those facilities, his water rights, and any, any infrastructure that he owned. Wanted to go through this in a little bit of detail, and it's kind of the, the what we do in your community piece. And so we, we irrigate about 17,000 acres from Staton, Almsville, Turner, Marion, and into South Salem, um, areas. We have about 485 customers and a couple key large farms. We do have some, um, California entities that have moved into the area, substantial investment in farms and farm infrastructure. We deliver raw water to the City of Staton Drinking Water Plant, so the water comes through our facilities and ditch, fish screen facility and ditches and delivered by our office to the drinking water plant, and then it's, um, it's city operations from there on. We do have eight Corps of Engineer revetments. We're the local sponsoring entity and take care for those revetments. They're mostly downstream of Staton, along the North Sannion River. But likely do, um, protect some lands closer into town, too. We generate, we have a hydropower generation plant behind our office. We generated about, uh, 1.2 million watts of energy. It's about 700 homes' worth or so. We did so under a, a contract with Pacific Corps and delivered that energy to them. That contract's expired now, and we're renegotiating it. But it is, it's there and running, and even, even when there's an emergency or something, that, that generation plant can still, um, produce power. We, we used to provide industrial cooling water to the Norpack, Norpack plant. That agreement has expired with their bankruptcy, but there's still a water right available, so there may be some use of that facility in the future. We provide fire ponds and fire protection water. Pretty key, the industrial space on Porter Road, Cascade High School, and some, the Oregon Christian Convention Center, some other key entities. They weren't, they were required to have fire protection water in order to develop those properties in most instances, and so the district water, delivering to a pond, allowed them to, to construct. And so we do, we do, um, deliver water for irrigation for several parks around, um, none in the city of Staton, but, um, Almsville, Turner, Salem, um, I'll take advantage of that. Couple golf courses, the golf course here in Staton, and also Meadow Lawn Golf Course in Salem, um, fed with irrigation water delivered by the district. So just a couple maps to give you a little bit of background, and these were more to, to leave for you as a, as a presentation, and you can look at, but you can see the general areas. As I said, there's, there's many cities there that we're providing to and interact with. You can see the city boundaries and then urban growth boundaries in, in those. The blue, blue lines are the, it, the ditches and canals that are, um, owned and operated by the district, and the red dashed lines, um, rivers and water bodies that are on the 303D list, um, listed as water quality impaired. So we do interact a lot with the return flows and the interactions we have with those facilities. This is just a little bit of a zoom up, zoom in on City of Staton area. We do have two canals primarily that run through the city, the Salem Ditch, um, the head gate at the park. And it serves primarily for the purpose of delivering water from the North Sannion River into Mill Creek, and then it's distributed through Mill Creek, um, to, to other uses there. And then the main, main irrigation se, system, um, the fish screens up at Riverfront Park, comes down through town, and then there's a set of head gates, um, that deliver out through the, throughout the district. Typically, we're diverting about 325 cubic feet per second. That's enough to fill, I think, it's like 1,300 Olympic-sized swimming pools a second or something like that. Lot of water. And then, um, just kind of why, why we're here, and why we, why we need to partner and, um, kind of work, work together in the future. And, um, as some of you may know, um, the water delivery contract whereby we deliver water to the city's drinking water plant expires this year, so it's time to negotiate a new one. That was a 20-year contract, um, and so there's been a lot that has changed in the system over, over the last 20 years. So a lot of, a lot to talk about there. We, we both interact, uh, stormwater, the total maximum daily loads, TMDLs, um, master plans, managing growth, all key issues for the two entities. We both now have to have TMDLs. The district was listed, um, recently, and so we're, we're writing our own concurrent and, and next to, um, one that the city, city has to write and implement, and in fact, the district standards may need to be stricter than the city's standards, um, related to, there's more to be seen there. The district is, um, completing, uh, we completed a system improvement plan, but we're, we're embarking on a large project, um, funded by the Natural Resource Conservation Service to look at piping, um, piping a lot of the ditches and canals in the area. So, um, we'll be going through a federal process and going through the federal requirements, NEPA, and, uh, environmental assessment, um, as required. And then a lot of federal actions, um, related to the Lamont system. You see it in the paper a bunch, but they're, um, they're looking at some big changes that could change the water availability and the way, um, we all see our water supply playing out in the future. And that's about all I have, um, at this point, and happy to answer any questions and look forward to future conversations with you all.
And before we get into questions, I just want to acknowledge that this is a, a big partner in that there's a lot of things that they do and that we interact with that affects us, and so there will be multiple conversations, um, work sessions going forward, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thanks, Julia. Thanks, Brett. I just have a question as far as your, uh, board. How's that board, uh, organized? Is it by, through election or appointments or?
Yeah. No, it's elected, elected board, um, within the district, yes. So they're all, um, they're all patrons of the district, so.
Yeah. A good presentation. Thank you. Any, counselor? Any questions?
You gonna let me off that easy?
Looks like it. Counselor Ort, looks like you have something on your mind.
I do. Thank you for the presentation and, um, explaining all of that, because sometimes people don't know what the water district actually does. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I do just have one question, and it's more just like a clarifying question for the community. Who owns the property behind the covered bridge?
The district owns the property.
The water district, right?
The Water District.
Okay, so the city at the moment doesn't have any control over the fence and whether it comes down or up. It's the Water District, right?
Correct.
So, I just want the community to know, because everybody gets mad at the city, because the fence is there, and it's, um, not our property, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Stevenson, the reason councillor Orde is asking these questions is because I, I think, like her, I received a lot of electronic communication when that went up, and really eagerly waiting to see when that wall comes down. So, we're, we're a willing partner to, to hear you guys out on that, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just hoping to see that open someday soon. Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, I think, I think this is the start of the opportunity to have those conversations, for sure.
And like I said, there, there will be, um, future discussions. Um, we will need to have, uh, meetings, work sessions, discussions, discuss the, um, the water delivery contract, and then there's also the stormwater conveyance, um, component, um, that we will, one, there's the stor-, I think, stormwater governance, I can't remember what the name of it's called.
Adaptive Management Group.
Adaptive Management Group, um, that we need to reconvene. Um, there haven't been meetings in a while, but basically, I believe there's, um, some representation from the city, um, leadership, and then some representative, some representation from the Water Control District, um, leadership to, to convene on a regular basis to discuss issues, um, so we need to start that up again. Um, and then hopefully, um, I was a little caught off when you said that your stormwater regulations might be stricter than ours going forward, but my hope was that there could be some conversations about us working together to kind of, um, enable and facilitate development in a, in a less strict way, but we'll see how that goes with, with laws and, and things like that going forward.
And, and that strictness is, uh, that comes from DEQ, so if they require us to have a higher threshold than the city, then of course, we would need to comply. So, thank you. And I, I'd just point out that the information related to kind of the formation of the district and our authorities, um, I'd urge you to take a little look at that in some detail. That was some difficulty related to the park. It's, it's no different than the, the city trying to spend, um, stormwater fees to improve this, you know, the streets or something, so there's some difficulties and some nuances and some de- details we need to work through. Thank you again so much.
Thanks, Brett. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, general business. Uh, Julia?
So, um, this a little baby bit of a segue into the next agenda item, um, the count, the appointment of council liaisons in your packet. There, base, basically, I, I'm hoping for some discussion and, and some indication from council on how you want to proceed. Um, my understanding is that most recently, uh, council chose to appoint representatives by topic areas rather than like to specific boards and commissions. Um, and what's identified in your, um, packet is the most recent, um, grouping and assignments. Um, several councillors are no longer on council, so, um, like I said, in the packet, obviously, there'll need to be some changes, no matter which direction you go. Um, but then I know Mayor Quigley was also interested in having more formal appointments to the different boards and commissions that there are, and having, um, having a discussion of council representation, attending those meetings on a regular basis. So, also, in, in the packet is a list of the boards, um, commissions or committees that meet regularly that, um, that I know of, um, at this point in time, um, their purpose and need, when they meet, how often they meet, if, if we have that information, um, and just trying to, to give council some basic direction on that. And so with that, I'll really turn it over to the mayor and council to have a discussion on how they want to proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Julia. Thanks for getting this information together, and, um, when I review it, now I can see why council was overwhelmed. Now I can see why the council says they don't have time to do it. I, I think, um, my recollection, and maybe what I would like to see is it condensed a whole lot when that we have here. My thought process is our current, um, committees within, um, to start within the, within our city. Um, certainly, there's a lot on these that could fall under any of these umbrellas, and there's just no way we have enough capacity to carry out all, all these. Um, so, I'd like to hear what the council has to say, but I guess just from my standpoint, like, uh, when I first came to council, I remember there was represent, when I first got on the Parks Board, there was representation by a member of the council, uh, it might have even been the mayor at the time. Uh, that's where I'd like to start, those little ones, like, uh, the Planning Commission, the Parks Board, Library Board, et cetera. Um, and maybe down the road, if we have time to expand this, we can talk about it, but that's my thought, and I'm hoping to hear what the council thinks.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
For the, um, the Planning Commission specifically, does that, to have one of us there, does that kind of muddy the waters in terms of, um, like decisions made on the council?
Yeah, good, good question.
That move up? I, that, I just want to talk about that.
Um, I don't think it has in the past. I mean, certainly Dan can weigh in on it. Um, for me, I think anybody can go to it. Uh, Dan, is Dan there?
I, I am here, Mr. Mayor, and councillor Orde. I do not believe that having a council liaison person regularly attend the Planning Commission meetings, uh, would affect his or her ability to hear an appeal. Um, for one, uh, everything that takes place at the Planning Commission is the, is on the record. It is the record. So, therefore, a council person, uh, being there doesn't mean that they're getting information that's not on the record. Uh, and secondly, uh, even if, if you think you're hearing information that the, that the rest of the council doesn't, if there is an appeal to the council, then you just declare that as, you know, part of, part of those introductory proceedings.
Okay. And I'll also add, in, in my prior experience, it was, um, completely common to have council liaisons, and it was a good conduit, um, both, um, during work session or informal conversations, um, for, for councillors to share, maybe, a council perspective, but, um, as importantly, for them to share back to council what's going on at those different boards and commissions of, here's things that they're struggling with, or here's things that they're hearing, so they're kind of the voice to the rest of the council on what's going on on those boards and commissions.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I guess I was just, I'm, that's, that's great. I guess something that has been said prior made me, made me concerned, that's why I brought that up, because I, that just didn't come out in thin air. I feel like someone told me, you know what I'm talking about? I feel like someone told me that, that can affect our decision-making, but if you're saying that it's not, then I'm cool with it.
The councillor Orde, I, I would agree. I have, I have heard in the past from others that they thought that there should not be a council liaison to the Planning Commission, but I'm laying out my philosophy and belief that I don't see that it is, uh, necessarily, uh, going to change any city council involvement in a, in an appeal.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is councillor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, was this related to a council member weighing into a planning committee's discussion, perhaps, that we're not really permitted to do, and I, I don't know if that would necessarily be super appropriate, but that's the only thing I can think of that perhaps you're thinking of.
I don't, I can't remember specifically, but I'm, I, I mean, I'm okay with it. It's, I don't see why we couldn't, that does, yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense if they are, uh, you know, a committee for us, so.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for, yeah, thanks for bringing it up, and that's why I asked for clarification, that's why, that was my interest in having the re-establishment of liaisons, and I'm glad you asked for confirmation, so. If that makes sense to the, to the council, that's what I'd like to see, and we can, you know, start off really small on it. Um, and again, as time permits, I don't know, my expectation wouldn't be to go to every single one of the meetings, just when you have the ability to do it. So, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, you're saying that liaison wouldn't have to be on every meeting that the budget, like, whatever committee is?
No, not with a budget committee, that's different.
I was about to say, I know, I, I didn't mean the budget committee, just knock out, the budget committee don't really need a liaison to. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I definitely am open to, um, this. I think it's a great idea. I think I'm personally a little bit wanting to wait till the homelessness committee starts, just to get a feel for what that workload will be, uh, but I do think especially just prioritizing maybe a couple of these committees, I think the Planning Committee is one that definitely should be prioritized, um, and trying to find maybe like one or two, just, what's the place to start, but I do think that we, we do need some more involvement.
Yeah, that's great. You, we don't have to do anything tonight, I just, uh, I just wanted to condense it a little bit, obviously, and, uh, if we want to put it to the next agenda item, we can, uh, I think that's pertinent. Okay. Awesome, so we won't take any action on it other tonight, and then until move it to the next or whenever future agenda item.
So, and just so I can, um, know what to prepare for, for the next meeting, um, are we going to continue? Ultimately, what I would recommend doing is having a, a formal appointment of liaisons, and so, we'll continue this conversation to the next meeting, and then discuss a little bit more about who, who might go where, is that what your thoughts are?
Yes, correct, yeah. I guess maybe what I'd ask is maybe over that time, have, uh, council send us which commissions they think we should have liaisons to, uh, and mostly, for in my mind, it's the internal ones, right? Um, it's what the internal, uh, committees like Parks and Rec and Library, et cetera, but, um, and then go from there. Pretty good? Good, awesome. Okay, thank you. Uh, on to the next item, uh, hospital parking options with Julia.
Yes, so the next item is primarily discussion as well, but we're hoping to get some, um, direction slash head nods with our recommendation, um, or, and/or we can continue the conversation. But, um, as you recall, the council had a work session back in December to discuss the issues, um, around, um, parking and transportation around the hospital. Um, following that work session, we, um, sent information out to, um, people that had been at the hospital's Neighborhood Parking Collaborative, as well as, um, just residents within a certain proximity of, um, the hospital, to share with them, um, what we had heard and what our initial recommendations were, and to give them an opportunity to provide comments. Um, a summary of the comments received is in your packet, um, at the, I think it starts on page thirty-four of your, um, council packet, the basically verbatim comments, and then it's also summarized, um, in your packet under Summary of Public Comments Received, um, around the, the basic, um, topic areas that we focused on, which was parking on Pine east of North Tenth, um, traffic speeds on North Tenth, parking on Fur west of North Tenth, parking on Mountain near the intersection of Fur, um, site distance from Pine and Fur onto North Tenth. So, those were the, the topic areas and recommendations, and after getting the, um, sharing with the public, getting comments back, meeting, um, internally with staff as well as with, um, Maggie from the hospital, um, we, um, I think have a, a general consensus recommendation, um, of how we want to proceed, how we recommend proceeding, and that's outlined, um, in your, your council packet. Items basically one through six. One would be install no parking signs on the north side of Pine Street between North Tenth and Mount Jefferson Drive, um, and we recommend at this time doing nothing on the south side, um, but re-examining in six months to consider whether installing, um, additional signage might be warranted on the south side. Um, installing no parking signs on the inside curves of Fur Street with the understanding that the, the city will look closely at the design, um, so that we're basically maximizing the amount of on-street parking that we're providing, um, to increase that availability of on-street parking. Um, installing signage on North Tenth, um, and look, installing signage a, along North Tenth, um, and, and looking into speed activate, activated signs, um, uh, and potentially modifying the painting at the crosswalk to increase visibility, so rather than just having the, the two lines across the road, having a more visible, um, perpendicular, um, painting on the crosswalk. Fixing the curb on Mountain Drive that was painted, um, that might have already been done, I'm not positive. Um, installing residential only, or residential parking only signs at the entry to Mountain Estates, um, and then also potentially looking at whether or not signage within twenty-five feet of the intersection, um, would be appropriate. Um, that's generally a, a law, that you're not allowed to park within, um, a certain distance of the intersection, um, but it, it appears that people, um, may be not following the law, so we need to look at that a little bit. And then, um, while our findings did not indicate that there was a site distance issue at, um, Pine and Tenth, the hospital who owns the property where there's the, the wall, um, listened to the comments and took it upon themselves, um, and got a, basically got authorization to, um, to go ahead and, um, begin lowering that retaining wall to improve site distance there. So, that is our recommendation. Um, our estimated cost to implement that, depending on the signage that we would install on Tenth, um, is between about fifty-five and ninety-five hundred dollars, and the hospital has, um, proposed to go in fifty-fifty with us, um, on whatever the ultimate cost is. So, I would like feedback from council on, on what, what you think about our recommendations, or if you think that we should do anything slightly different. Or questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, as I was taking a look through these comments, um, there's a few things that stood out to me. Uh, the first one is, uh, that there was a majority of feedback that, uh, from the citizens that were in favor of lowering the speed limit on, uh, Tenth Street. I think there's only one person that was opposed to that, um, definitely citing, uh, a number of concerns, uh, also in regards to just the safety of pulling out onto Tenth Street, uh, and I do think it's something that should definitely be considered as a part of this, uh, process as well. I think that there's, uh, we definitely want to look at the design standards, um, and the, you know, the, all the different engineering standards and stuff, but I think it's very important, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a high residential traffic area. It's right adjacent to two residential zones that are typically in that twenty-five mile-an-hour range, um, and I think that the feeling of safety near hospital and in that place is, is warranted, and it's something that should be very considered, especially when I think there's been substantial feedback from the public, uh, regarding that issue. So, that's something I would really like to take a look at, um, is if we can get that lowered, as well as, um, I think it was mentioned as a possible solution, um, in, in the, uh, comments that were provided to the public, but I didn't see in the final recommendation was potentially lowering the speed on, um, Pine, down to twenty as well. I think it's Pine, I, I think it's the one next to. On Fur, I'm sorry. Yeah, on Fur, down to, uh, down to twenty miles an hour. I know that was a conversation that was had as well. Um, so those, those would be the two that I would really like to take a look at.
Anybody else? Councillor? Julia, I think there's a lot of suggestions here. Uh, what I'd like to see is maybe condensed version of this for us to consider, um, and a condensed version based on consensus of the comments that councillor Julia just mentioned, because there's a lot of consensus in a lot of those comments and a lot of those feedback. Um, I will tell you that over the last month or more, I've noticed a definite, uh, improvement in the parking utilization, uh, of the hospital at the bottom of Tenth and Saniam, so, um, hopefully there's some movement within, uh, the hospital to encourage our folks to park there and, uh, help with the, the issue. That's my standpoint.
Can I ask for clarification on what you mean by a condensed version of the comments or the?
Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, just all, just everything that we have here in the report. Maybe take each box and just summarize it in a list of, um, stuff.
Within the summary?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, councillor Orde.
Um, I live over in this area, and it's really, it's a really weird thing, like, sometimes, um, Pine Street there is, like, the streets are lined all the way up to the stop sign, and then sometimes there's none, and then going down Fur, there's no cars, and then the next day it'll be, and it's even weekdays, so it's not like we comparing weekends to weekdays or anything, so it's just a really weird kind of, um, thing, like, it doesn't really, there's, doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason why people are parking certain areas. Um, I just wanted to make that comment, but, um, like you, like you drive down, I'm like, oh, it's, it looks like it's working, they're using, utilizing the parking lot down there, and then all of a sudden, there's cars again, and, um, I see it. Do we have? Do we have public comment for this? Oh, we do. We kind of skipped that.
Yeah, go ahead. You can do public.
You gotta come up to the microphone, Denise.
I live in 1435 Highlands, so up right by Jordan, actually. So I've called the hospital directly and talked about the concern on Pine, because I've almost hit people. I mean, they come out of their cars, they sit out in the street and talk, then you have, you know, other cars trying to come up the other direction. I think some of the being clear with parking and not parking is when the hospital sends emails to their employees and asks them not to park, we see it clear for a while, and then we see, you know, one car pop in, and then I'm sure it's, oh, well, somebody's parking there again, but it's been clear for quite a while, since I'm sitting here. On Fur, you know, I'm used to Fur. Fur doesn't bother me as much, being lined with cars or sidewalks on both sides, but the one area is on that corner. So definitely needs to be looked at for sight, because there's no way of knowing if there's another car coming, and then if you have people there. So if, you know, if there's any consideration for maybe a one-sided, no parking, I would say would be on that curve going down Fur, but the rest of it, I've never really had any issues there because of the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, kind of along that, I think that this goes back to the speed limit for me as well. So like, there's a lot of studies that show like that, you know, there's, like, when there are cars on both sides of a street, people naturally slow down. So like, there's this natural impediment to speed that happens now that like both cars are there. So when you take that away, you're also risking potentially like having people naturally go faster. So I think that the speed limit coming in there actually becomes more important on Fur. I'm not sure there's an issue right now with the speed, but I think that it could definitely become an issue, because there's just this natural, there's a natural slowing down that happens when you see both sides with cars. And then, the other thing I wanted to bring up was that there's, so when it comes to, on Mountain Drive, there was a no residential parking sign that's being proposed. But one that comes up in the comments a lot is potentially having a similar sign, whether that's no residential parking or no hospital parking. And it's my understanding that I think the hospital is not a huge fan of having no hospital parking, but that was also something that was being considered initially, is that it doesn't quite make sense to me that, and I'm also thinking about some of these timelines for reconsidering, and being a six-month timeline for reconsidering. I think that just anticipating some of like, if you take away the parking on the north side, if that parking is just going to shift to the south side, that makes sense to me to definitely be keeping at least a very close eye on it. I think it's, I think the rationale doesn't quite make sense that if you were going to allow that in Mountain Drive, having that sign, signage, that you wouldn't allow that on Pine. Hopefully, I get the street's name. I'm sorry, those names of the streets have been confusing me. No, it's Fur and Pine. It's Fur and Pine. All right, that sounds good. Fur and Pine. So yeah, on Pine, it just makes sense that maybe anticipating that might be an option. If that, if the enforceability of something is the main issue, well, then I think that would carry over to the Mountain Drive, but it seems like that's, the sign is, that signage is being recommended to be used on Mountain Drive. So something I just wanted to consider as well. And then, yeah, just kind of a, yeah, so that'd be the other thing that I was considering.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Counselor Patty.
Yeah, Julia, that's one thing that I was kind of scratching my head when I went through the staff report, too, is the thing about how this was going to be permitted at the entrance of Mountain, but not necessarily Pine. And honestly, I'm still sort of scratching my head at that, and I don't really understand the difference, so maybe from a staff perspective, we could just hear why that is, that would be great.
Yeah, Counselor Gilio asked me that earlier today, and I had initially had a hard time answering, but I think the, the main reason is the, what the issues were being presented on different streets. This is a variety of issues sort of being addressed in one comprehensive package, if you will. And so the issues that we heard on Mountain Drive were people parking in our neighborhood that don't belong here, you know, that are hospital, people taking up our spaces, preventing us from being able to back out of our driveways. Whereas what we were hearing on Pine was people parking on both sides of the street, making it difficult for traffic to see coming in and out of the intersection. So it was really a different issue that we were looking at and trying to resolve. That said, you know, yes, if we're going to do residential only parking one place, we probably could do it some other place. Again, we do have the concerns that it's really not something that we will be prepared to enforce, because we really can't, which is why initially staff's recommendation was more of a no hospital parking. Just to be very clear, this is what the intent is, but the hospital was concerned that it sounded kind of negative and not, you know, sort of anti versus, hey, you know, this is for residents versus don't be here. So it's, I guess, a long story, a long way of saying, we certainly could sign the south side as residential only, it just wasn't our initial recommendation, because it wasn't the problem that we were looking at at that point in time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So with this, I mean, I think that we can be a little anticipatory here, right? Parking is going to be a little bit more finite, and there probably needs to be some advisory there, especially if it is in one place, and seemingly not being in another would be indicative that that would be permissible, right? So I think that at this phase, we're going to have to do that. And on that note, is Gwen here? Maybe we could just talk about some of the challenges to enforcement on this, just so everybody has sort of a balanced expectation of what this would look like.
Yes. Chief Johns is here, and she, as she will come up.
Thank you, Chief.
I guess I will start by saying it will not be enforceable, because it's, there's nothing, there's no way that they're going to be able to investigate and figure out who is who. So I'll let her expand upon that.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so some of the problems come in that if a vehicle shows up, we really have no idea if it's someone who is a resident, it's their son, it's someone visiting the resident, if it's someone parking and going to the hospital. So it makes enforcement of a sign saying no resident, or, you know, residential parking only extremely difficult. We'd have to know who it was that parked there. Could they possibly be visiting a house two houses down? And it just makes the enforcement of it very difficult in regards to that.
Real quick, Chief, if you were to receive a report from a citizen that was residing in a location, and they were to say, hey, this employee just parked here, and I just saw them walk into the hospital to go do their shift, they do this every day, would you then have PC for anything at that point?
Maybe. I mean, it just becomes very difficult in the enforcement of it, and it's being a violation, and then working within being neighbors, right, and how we want to, I guess, work hand-in-hand with the hospital and with the neighborhood itself. But in talking to the neighbors, you know, they understood, like, how would you know if it's my son's buddy that's showing up to visit, or how would you know if it's grandma coming over to babysit the kids, potentially in that very finite situation? But again, it's, it creates a lot of issues in that enforcement of it.
Thanks for the explanation, Chief, I appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, and then I would just say, because some of the questions came up about the speeds, we did do, put out our traffic box to look at the speeds and what, there's compliance right now with that speed, so it's showing that it's reasonable and we're gaining compliance. I've also looked at the stats, there's no crashes in, on 10th at Pine. In fact, in that general neighborhood, the only crashes that I found in the last three years were in the parking lot itself, which, you know, is a different issue, but not in the residential streets surrounding.
And that said, there is a process that we could explore to look at lowering the speeds, and that's certainly something that we, that we will be prepared to do. We just wanted to get some direction from council on if that's something that you wanted us to explore. And so we, you know, again, when we come back with the condensed summary of comments and kind of capturing what we're hearing, we can, we can add that. It probably would be something that would take more time, because there'll have to be studies, whereas some of the other things we could do more quickly.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Julia, so the crosswalk there, it has the button to light up, right, the crosswalk?
I'm going to let Lance come up and talk about it.
Yes, okay, so. Lance, well, you don't, yes, it has, I'm just, I'm like, am I remembering this correctly? So there is a lighted crosswalk, so I'm just, I mean, I guess you don't have to push that if you're crossing the crosswalk, but I don't know how, I mean, that is even more visible than stripes on the, more stripes on the pavement, I would assume.
So I'd like Lance to share a little bit about what his thought is on making that crosswalk more visible, as well as the additional signage in advance of the crosswalk that we're talking about.
Yeah, I think we have to look at it as a multi-pronged approach to this. And I will say, I'm glad you brought up that if we do want to reduce the speed, it's going to cost us quite a bit more money, because there's studies involved, which is something the council will want to approve. It might double the amount or triple the amount of money it's cost to do this, so you guys should be aware of that. But as far as that intersection going across 10th Avenue, the, what we'd like to do, what we propose to do, is put some additional signage going north and southbound, letting people know there's a crosswalk up ahead, maybe add another one, so up and down 10th, you can see crosswalk ahead. And then instead of having the double parallel crosswalk, we'd put a continental crosswalk, which is like what Julia talked about there, it's more of a keyboard, like a piano board going across. Visually, you can see those, because you can see the full width of the key bar, they're usually around eight feet apart, so you have more of an angle to see that versus two lines. You might even not even see two lines. But that with the pedestrian actuated signal there, if people want to cross, they press that, should light them up. So I think the additional signage with that will work, and then if the council wants to explore lowering the speed there, you just need to be aware, there's studies that need to be done for the council to do that. The council has the right to do that, but we have to go through a specific traffic warrants, and that study will need to be done before the council can do that. And that goes for Pine/Fur as well, if you want to reduce speed there as well, the same kind of study needs to take place.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, why do we have to do the study to lower the speed?
Because it's a state law.
Okay, I can understand if you want to raise the speed limit, but if you want to lower it to make people go slower...
It's a state law.
So what is the, do we have, so we have to do the study, but do we have, are we bound by the outcome of the study? So if the study, because it, in our packet, it says that the recommendation doesn't more, like, you guys don't, what the speed is right now doesn't seem to warrant lowering the speed limit? So if the study comes out and says we don't think that it warrants it, but we want to do it anyway?
So what I will say is, I don't have that specific answer for you. This is a law that just passed on January 1st, so I haven't dove into it much. I just know there's a process. I read the ORS, it tells you what you need to do, but it doesn't tell me, you know, what, regardless of what the outcome is of the study, what kind of clout or what kind of direction the council has as far as lowering the speed limit. It just says, if you want to lower the speed limit, you have to, you have, the councils have that right, but you have to do these warrants or this study by a traffic engineer to look at the actual street you want to lower it at. And that's what I'm trying to communicate. That would have to take place.
I thank you for that.
All right. And it's probably around 5,000 a street, minimum.
And I think at the next meeting, what I would recommend is getting a little bit more information on what that process is, what the law says, what we think. But at the end of the day, I guess I would recommend that we, that we not wait for us to have all the answers and all the solutions that we try to, we've got some low-hanging fruit that I think there's a lot of consensus around, and then we can move forward on some of that while we're still discussing what we do on some other elements. You know, I think primarily it's the traffic study and lowering the speed, but there might be some others that come up at the discussion next time as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I had one more question for Chief Johns. Sorry. Chief, just wondering if you feel like there's any difference between the enforceability of a no hospital parking or a no hospital employee parking signage versus no residential parking?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It would be the same.
Okay.
Chief, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You said there weren't any accidents that you guys could find on that street, correct?
Correct.
If you look at Mr. Hartlo's response to the questions, he says he wrecked his vehicle on 10th Street, at Pine Street, on May 20th, 2021. You guys have that one documented?
Based on what was reported, we didn't find any reported on that street. We had, oh, I take it back, we had one had nothing to do with speed, someone pulled out, violated right away. So we had, we had one at 10th and Pine in the time period that I researched. I can look up that specific one to see if it was reported.
Okay. And the speed study that we did with the box?
Uh huh.
What was the percentage of that?
I'd have to pull the report, but I can get that to you guys.
Was it 85%?
Of compliance?
Yeah, what was compliance?
It was really high.
If we, if we, yeah, it was extremely high, but I have, it breaks it down to like percentage of people traveling within, above, below. Basically, it came down to if I saw a police car there for an entire hour, we might get one violation. That would be, you know, a stoppable violation.
Okay. I don't want to go into too many details. What's a stoppable violation? Over, how many miles an hour, over?
At least, at least five over, but generally a little bit higher.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at...
Because, I mean, you got like tire sizes that play in, you got hills, you know, there's some reasonableness, we're not going to stop someone 26 and 25.
Gotcha, yep. What I really want to see, I disagree with everyone, said there's not a speed issue on that street. And the only way that we know that's going to be the case is if we actually do enforcement. And so I would like to see enforcement be an element of this entire solution. So, that's what I see.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So we're not, we don't have a, we're not making a decision tonight, correct?
No.
To want to talk about these ones that we, these recommendations that we like or not like, or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's fine. What I'd like to do is just have them bring it back at some point with the condensed, instead of hanging out in it all over the place, or the ones that actually, like Julia said, the ones that have the low-hanging fruit that we can all agree on, great. I think the bigger issue is really looking at the stuff that we need to give further evaluation to.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Patty. Julia, with whatever we get back after this in the condensed version, could we just see fiscal impact for changes in speeds on Fur Street and 10th Street included with that information, please? Thank you.
For studying the change in speed? Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think just kind of in terms of general feedback, I'm generally in agreement with these. I think that it seems like the public feedback is generally in agreement as well. I think that the main point of the points listed here would just be five, just because I think that if you're going to use that signage someplace, that it should be available somewhere else. And so that'd be the only piece that maybe we either want to make a decision on, of whether we want to add that to the south side tonight, or put, push pause on five for me until we... five for me until we just maybe think about that. I'm maybe okay moving forward with five and then waiting a couple of months, but I just know that these processes don't move very quickly all the time. So, and, and trying to anticipate what future issues may, may arise. But other than that, I think pretty good with all of these, except for, yeah, taking a look at the speeds, getting, getting kind of the feedback on specifically what kind of studies we're going to need and what the fiscal impact will be at the next meeting. And then, and then just on, on the South Side. I would be in favor of putting it on the South Side, the no residential parking, residential parking only on the South Side. I know, it sounds like Counselor Patty maybe as well, so just wanting to maybe, maybe answer that question, but other than that, I think I'm, I'm good on, on these.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald.
And this is, this is a little bit, little bit off topic, but it's a question I had kind of contemplated the last time we talked about this. And this is kind of something that might, it's going to be something that's probably more expense, but have we, my question is, have we thought about any other improvements to the North Side of Pine, other than signage? I know that North Side doesn't have curbs or a sidewalk or anything there, or, you know, what else we could do to kind of alleviate the, the situation? I don't, maybe, maybe, maybe it wouldn't, I don't know, but there is, that is unimproved on that side, right? So what does, what would a curb do to that side of the street? What would a sidewalk do?
So we haven't really contemplated that much at all because it would be a, a pretty, I think, significant expense. We certainly can provide some high level ballpark, you know, information on, on what we think that would cost to, to improve that street for your next discussion, but I think it will be more than, certainly more than we've proposed here.
Sure, understood, thank you.
So do we have enough direction then for your next time?
Yeah, this is really helpful. So at the, the next meeting, or as soon as I can pull this together, we'll have some, some consolidated or condensed summary of the comments received. I appreciate Counselor Gilio's sort of assessment, that I think generally there's consensus even with the comments and with the council on the majority of the recommendations. There's a few areas that you want more information on, and we'll provide that information at the next meeting to hopefully get some, some clear direction to proceed.
Thank you. So that leaves us with communications from city staff.
Just a second. Sorry, I'm just writing down notes so I don't forget what I'm supposed to do at the next meeting.
Can I preface that before you start then?
Yes.
Julia, I want to thank you and Counselor Patty for the hard work you guys did for us at Capitol Day, is at the Capitol. For you as in the audience, Julia arranged for myself and Counselor Patty to go to the League of Oregon City is Capitol Day, what was it, two weeks ago now? Two weeks ago, I believe. And basically what it is, is an opportunity for all the cities in the state to come to legislature and advocate on behalf of any issues and local issues and have discussions with their representatives. And Julia arranged to have myself and David go see Representative Deal, as well as Senator Gerard, where we had an opportunity to talk about infrastructure, talk about funding needs, and it was really instrumental for us to be there, I think. And Julia, thanks for doing that, setting that up. I enjoyed myself. Let's see what the results are. I'm encouraged by at least having that door open for us and having that dialogue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for being there, because I think you are way more effective at having those conversations than I am, and I think that was really valuable. And I agree, I think that there's a lot of, I'm excited about the future. So my announcements, I've got some of them, I'm going to call some, a couple of directors up. But first, I want to thank Alyssa for covering while I was on vacation last week. She did a great job. And then you will notice that you've got little trinket carriers, I don't know what you want to call it, salsa, guac, whatever you want, from my vacation. So, and I promise it didn't cost very much money, but I was thankful to be able to go and know that everything was taken care of. I also just wanted to announce that we received today, that we received yet again the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our budget. So that's great and is a real testament to the hard work that the community and staff and everybody does to put the budget together. So, good job, city. Before I got here, I can't take any credit for that whatsoever, but, and then I also, I would like to ask Lance to come up and give you a little update on water in relation to a Facebook post and some, some Facebook information, and give you guys an update, and then I'll have Chief Johns come up.
Well, David, would you like to start us off?
No, I think you should, Lance, but thank you for the opportunity.
So, yeah, I'm sitting there having my coffee Saturday morning, and I looked at my phone, and there's a text from Mr. Patty, which I thought it was Julia. But apparently we had a water issue Friday night. It was, it's actually Friday night. And one of the valves up at our pressure tank at the 5 million gallon reservoir stuck open. And when, in doing so, it, it shot air into our water line, and it was high pressure air. And so there were, it was like carbonation in our water supply for a good, I don't know, quarter mile down the road, Highland Drive. So Jordan, you may have experienced it as well. But my folks were out there Friday night bleeding off the water, and they went out, they went out Saturday morning to do it as well. The person that called in Friday night, he was actually there Saturday morning, and my folks went and talked to them, this gentleman, and he said it was all good. And so we had no more air in the line as of Saturday morning. The valve, we are just following it, and we tried to cycle it using our software. It hasn't stuck open, but we're looking at remedies to fix that so it doesn't happen in the, in the future. And so that's, it's never happened before, so it's a one-time thing, but we're looking for a way to remedy it so it won't happen ever again. So, that's it. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for the quick response on that. Sorry for bugging you on a weekend, Lance, please forgive me.
Julia does it all the time, don't worry.
Yeah, thank you. I was making oatmeal for my kids, and I thought that I didn't wash the pot out well enough. I was like, oh, this is, the water, I was like, I thought I got all the soap out, so I, and I dumped it out. And then later I saw the post, I was like, oh, that, it was, like, it looked carbonated and cloudy, and I was like, oh. So, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you and your team.
If that ever happens again, just turn on your faucets for a little bit. You'll see, you'll hear the air coming out of it. And just let it run a little bit, air will come out, and then you'll be back to normal. It shouldn't happen again, but.
And I think the main thing is that it, yeah, it's, it's safe, it's not a, an issue with quality, it's just air. And Chief, do you want to come up? There's been.
Well, I'm very excited to announce that Officer Brewster graduated from Academy on January 20th. And for those that don't know, Academy is 16 weeks long, a lot of academics, a lot of hands-on, case law, driving, range, defensive tactics, decision-making, so lots of stuff that goes into Academy. I did not find out until I showed up at Academy, at the graduation, that Officer Brewster was to receive the top academic award, which was fantastic and something we're very proud of. I learned that he received 100% on his midterm and his final, which at least they said had not, they had not seen that before. So we're very happy to have Officer Brewster back with us. And he's our third graduate in the last few months, so getting all our recruits back on the road and with their field training officer. So currently Officer Brewster's on a day shift. Officer Pendell, who graduated a month previous, two Officer Brewsters breaking into a, kind of a swing graveyard shift. And then Officer Gamble is in his checkout phase, which is fantastic, which means if everything goes on track, that we've given him all the tools, and he's successful, he should be getting checked out into solo phase here shortly. He is on afternoon shift. None of the three are currently on tonight for them to come in and greet you all, but we will get that set up where we get an intro to our new officers and the council. Some other things that I wanted to announce, our officers frequently work DUI grants, and that's federal money that we get reimbursed to us to send officers out on the road focused on DUI enforcement. So with Super Bowl Sunday coming up, we have some officers dedicated to DUI enforcement. We also get grant money for seatbelt enforcement and distracted driving. And then you guys have received some of the updates on them, but we've had three pretty significant felony person crimes in the last month, month and a half. One was a Facebook post recently with the carjacking, which is pretty unusual for our area, but a case where our officers did extremely well getting there quickly, establishing good information, getting that information out quickly, establishing a potential location for the stolen car. Marion County was quick to assist us and was able to recover the car, and we were able to make an arrest and, and custody, lodge that person in jail. Our other one that we're working on, just so you guys know, some of these cases take significant time investment and investigation. So the one is involved writing search warrants, doing neighborhood canvases, quite a bit of documentation, gathering surveillance video, and that will lead to a, a successful case that will be taken before a grand jury. So lots of good stuff happening, but some of those have taken some pretty significant officer time and follow-up and investigation into that, so. Any questions?
Chief, I think you're leaving something out about the graduation.
Well, I had the honor of being the keynote speaker, and I will tell you, it was amazing. It was nerve-wracking to prepare a speech, because you want it to be thoughtful and also not be a speech where people are looking at their clock, wondering when you're done. And my husband was wonderful. He got to listen to the speech far more times than he probably wanted to, so he was, he was fantastic with that. But far more impactful to me than I expected. It was amazing to be on stage to handshake, greet, and congratulate each and every graduate, 40 graduates from across the state of Oregon. And for me, it was, it was amazing to be up there and greet each graduate and congratulate them.
Yeah. Congratulations on preparing Brewster for that work.
Yeah, he's, he's doing great.
And I, I think that was a fantastic recruit, obviously, and all the work you did prepping him to get to the academy, to focus on that should be recognized.
Well, thank you.
So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and, and also probably a good time to, to tell you, hiring a police officer is, is pretty significant, pretty significant time investment, beginning one with HR, then into the police department. But it starts with the application, but then goes, they have to go through testing, reading and writing. They do a video where they have to, they're graded on decision-making, they're graded on ethics, a whole host of things before we even get an opportunity to bring them in for interview. They go through an interview with usually three people on the panel, and then from there, everything is built on being successful at the previous level. So if they're successful at an interview, they get invited to a pre-psyche, and that's sitting and answering literally like 500 questions on a Scantron that we send off to our contract psychologist. Then that requires them to come back if they're successful on that and talk to, in this case, it's been me, the last three years doing the hiring process, follow-up questions, they go back in and do another Scantron. Ultimately, they will have a one-on-one with a psychologist, they'll go through a background where the background investigator goes out and talks to past employers, talks to neighbors, friends, family, and then medical. So we've kind of expedited the process over the last few years, because it has been competitive with so many agencies across the state of Oregon hiring, but it, it's, it's in-depth, there's a lot to it. So when we get good candidates like we have with Gamble, Pendell, and Brewster, we're, we're very proud. And I will say, until Chief retired, Chief Rizindal and Sergeant Wetzel, we were one of the few agencies in Marion County to actually say that we were fully staffed. And then unfortunately, then we had the two retirements, and we'll get back there, but thank you.
Good job, thanks. Anybody else? Go ahead, David.
I was just going to say that I was at the graduation, and Chief Johns did an excellent job, and it was very impactful and profound to hear what she had to say.
Awesome. Counselor Or.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Brent, I just, I had one more question for you, I promise it's, it's not a hard one. If, if you wouldn't mind, I forgot when you were, when I, when you were talking. Because it was brought up, the chicken farms during the public comment, do, does the Water District have any thoughts, concerns, a position on it?
Good question.
How it might affect the Water District or the, the surrounding community?
Sure. I think as you heard in testimony, one of our ditches actually runs right through the center of the proposed entity.
That's the Almsill, or the?
The Almsill site, yeah, Shaft Road. You know, we, we have state agencies that are tasked with protecting our air and water quality, and so I would first and foremost kind of defer to their decisions on the potential. I think, you know, it's a little premature for the district to look at impacts related to us when we don't even know what the state will require as a condition. So waiting to hear what, what they propose first, and then, and then it'll go before my board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gilio, go ahead.
Yeah, just kind of on that same topic, in reference to the public comment that we received, as well as the concerns that I've had, and just briefly looking through, you know, the, the similar letters, it seems like the City of Almsill sent, as well as potentially some others. I personally am fully supportive of issuing a letter in support of this bill. I think that from a quality of life perspective and from a local business's perspective, I think there's a lot of reasons to be, to be against this, as well as just from a humanitarian perspective. I think that the stuff they do at Foster's Farms is not great. So I, I don't see very much downside being in support of this. I see a lot of upside. I think that we want to prioritize quality local farming, and I don't think that I would just be in general agreement. I think it hurts property values, I think it clogs traffic, I think there's a lot of downside.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Or.
I want to piggyback on that because it's not just, we could sit here and say, well, it doesn't technically affect Staton, but again, the public testimony given today, it does affect, you know, the Water District potentially with that going through that property. But in terms of air quality, and I can get you guys the information, but from what I've been told is if they put one of the CAFOs out on that Porter, that Porter Farm property, previous Porter Farm property, the air particulates will, basically, it's the air pollution will cover the City of Staton and go beyond the distance of Staton. And so it's, it's not just the neighbors that are surrounding it that are, that are going to be impacted, it will be our community that will also be impacted.
Counselor Patty.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's Counselor Patty. I just was thinking that, you know, it sounds like we're all, I don't know where Counselor McDonald sits on this issue, if we're all in support of
If we're all in support of this, why don't we just motion to write a letter from the State and submit a, State and City Council and then move forward with something like that? Because I, I think that we all share this and I think we all have seen this concern for some time now. I don't, I don't see a drawback either, like Counsel Gilio said, to composing some sort of letter in support of the House bill and Senate bill. Though, that's just my take on it.
To confirm, yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Supportive as well. Yes.
So it looks like you have direction there, Julia.
Yes, I will draft a letter. Do you, I can certainly draft a letter and have the mayor sign it, or would all of council like to sign it at the next meeting?
Let's all sign it. That's my take.
My only, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
The only issue I would have would just be speed, making sure that we can get it out. The informational meeting was, I think they said?
The 20th.
Was it the 20th? Was it the 20th? All right. So if we, if we're able to get it signed by the next meeting, wait, hold on.
The next meeting is?
Is the 20th. It's the 20th. Yeah. It is, yeah, yeah, it's the 21st. That's right, because it's the President's Day. Yeah, so if we, if we're able to sign it before that informational meeting, that would be my preference. And if we are in support of it, I think we can say it from the City of Staton.
Yeah, I think if there's a consensus, I'll, I'll draft a letter. If, if one of you looks at it and doesn't want to sign it, then I guess you don't have to sign it. I'll, I'm getting direction to draft a letter and those of you who want to sign it, we will allow you to sign it.
And come in and do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. And then I would still urge anyone to give a testimony individually to all of you in the audience, if you feel called to do so, to send your testimony and how it might impact you and your community as well. So.
Okay, that leaves us with communications from city staff. I'm, I'm sorry, we already did that. Communication from Mayor and Council, which you guys already discussed. Is there anything else on top of that? Besides the letter? No? I'll give you a brief update today. This morning I went to meet with Senator Berkeley prior to his town hall in Salem. Myself and the mayor from Detroit were the only representatives from the canyon, I believe, and the rest were pretty much centric to Salem, Kaiser, Woodburn. There's a lot of ask of the senator from a funding standpoint. I appreciate him and Betsy giving me the opportunity to be there. I will tell you that his concentration is on homelessness, mental health and addiction services. So when it comes for us to look at our infrastructure, we're going to be challenged a little bit, I believe. So counsel, keep it in mind when it comes to trying to figure out solutions to this, it's going to be homegrown, if you will. It's going to be internally. Certainly would take all the funding sources we can get, but I think because of the nature of the asks that are out there right now, we might be somewhere on the list. So just take it for what it's worth. Outside of that, does anything else? With that, let's adjourn the meeting for tonight and go home.